Follow order meeting of the plan with Monday, September twenty third, twenty twenty four at. Oh, two. First item we have on the agenda, we don't have anybody. Calling in on our board, right? So we don't have to do the reading. Open forum, anything not currently on the agenda that you brought up today? I think, nothing, nothing, nothing. I think, alright.
I'm sorry. The flying ornament, I'm just curious about the, the status of the zoning bylaws and.
Now, that's on our agenda.
Is it?
Committee liaison reports.
Okay, cool, I'll wait.
Alright, next item, we have administrative items. Z B A case twenty twenty four dash sixteen special permit fourteen oh five Fremont Street. It'd be separately, I believe. So these are referrals to the zoning board of appeals. First case is. Sign, correct?
Sign, not overly complicated.
Signs have come here.
I had a lot of questions in the last meeting that I answered with, I think. So I have a sign and a tape member.
Alright, we're ready. Okay. So is the sign meeting the sign requirements? Is that what was coming up? Were you at our last meeting?
Nope, different, different committee.
Oh, different, alright, alright, alright.
Do you know, I'm sorry, we won't discuss the process, it's been a big process.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, yeah.
But it does meet the requirements, it's the right size, it's gonna be forty inches out of the ground where.
Those are the only requirements. Basically, and for us, we're just a referral board to the zoning board of appeals. So generally, we, in the case of a sign, we defer to their. Decisions, if that, you haven't been before then.
I think so, that's the last meeting with you guys.
Designer. Yeah, there, and have all the tech.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we can see the sign now, which is unusually. So as far as we're concerned, as long as we know the zoning board of appeals will make sure everything fits in to the regulations. Anybody have any questions on display that were raised? Pretty straightforward. I would then create a motion to for judgment to the zoning board of appeals. On this special part. So we have a second, second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Hey.
Alright.
No problem. You're all set with us. You forgot your water bottle.
Thank you.
Yep. It looks like it's light enough just to walk around.
I know, maybe I will, I'm not even gonna hang it. I'm gonna get the permit and I'm gonna keep it with me.
Thank you, guys. Okay, next item, Z B A case twenty twenty four dash seventeen special permit four by four Franklin Street.
For that one? Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Tanya Treveson, I'm with Mary Ann Shana St. Muti, uh, here with my client, Meredith Stewart. Answer any questions if you might have.
Okay. Anybody have anything?
I was just gonna say, the, the letter, the brief was super detailed and revision.
Thank you.
You, you found a use in the bylaw, no problem.
Um. Not exactly.
Not exactly.
Yeah, yeah, that's why we're going to the zoning board and having them, like, intermation.
Yeah.
On that, but.
We're trying to clean up the uses and put together a use table, so that's. Part of the liaison report coming up, so, so you know, our uses are a bit outdated and down. Not very user friendly. But, so you weren't able to find just a specific one to fit it into?
Correct, the only, the closest thing that came to it was veterinarian, you know, veterinary office, and this is not that.
Not veterinarian, yeah.
So, uh, yeah, so the town council, um, advised us to, um, come in over, uh, home keeps.
And it's gonna be run out of. The home, the kindness of the home, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Anybody have any other specific questions? I don't, you, where have you been running out of? Cause I saw the letters of support.
Yes, um, that's correct. So I, I have a location also in.
So you'll still have that location as well?
Yes, that's correct.
So are you running anything out of the property now in point question?
Um.
As far as dog training?
Yes, yes, yes. So we wanna legalize these.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fair enough. Seems like it was a grand part of a pre-existing use anyways, when the commercials led. Was it, um, was there already something going on on the property?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't get to read all the details, sorry. I just flew in last night, so.
Yeah, so the property was previously used by, um, in Mr. Nud, uh, who you need, he might remember from town, right? So is a construction, um, staging area, so lots of heavy equipment, boulders, um. All that kinda stuff, so it was commercial, there had been a lot of complaints, um, regarding to his use of that property because of. The, the noise and the trucks and everything else, um. So this is a very different, uh, use, uh, which we think would be reasonable for the property. There's also a, um. A five G cell tower on the property, um, you can see it if you drive by it, and it's three, um, properties right adjacent to that, so. The commercial uses.
We have any suggestions from your board, or strictly wanna. Defer over to their decision? I didn't have anything, this, this is strictly a use case, I mean, you guys aren't doing any sort of changing of the structures or anything appropriate that. Yeah, and it's not boarding. All training, right? They come for training, off they go again. Um, my only questions would be about, um, typical commercial things like signage, parking.
No signage, no parking, um, yeah, so there, the dogs are picked up and they are dropped off. Back and on, so there will be no traffic, you can't, uh, and. There's a.
Or somebody chewing.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
It's not done. Okay. So. If anyone cares, make a motion?
I, I make a motion that we need to defer this to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. Second? Second. Motion second, any further discussion? None, call for the vote, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. I pose extensions, alright, good luck.
Thank you.
So, as you know, it's always tricky.
Yes.
For the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah.
Everybody comes up with some idea.
Yeah.
But. Sure to get. Uh, next thing we have is minutes, August twelfth, August twenty sixth, and September nineteenth.
Meaning you might wanna stay.
I, no.
I'm just curious. She asked about some other.
Okay, perfect, thank you, right.
Okay.
After the minutes part.
Yes. So got the minutes. Entertainer motion to accept the minutes. Uh, where the meeting as written. Somebody has changes. Um. Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Alright. Motion a second, um, any other discussion? None, call for the vote, all those in favor, approval of the minutes for the three dates?
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Pose extensions, all good. Next item, subdivision rules and regulation, general codes editorial and now legal analysis, so. This is the same list we got from general code for the zoning bylaw review. The zoning bylaw review. thrown off because these were included. Okay, your question, there's a, no, 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 stop at that question, we're, you're not, we're not answering anything beyond that, the one we ended at on that, so. And so this is another, um. Just some. Basic items. That they're looking for. Some redirection from us as to. What is the wording here supposed to be, you know, which of these options would you wanna do? In place of the confusing parts. Honestly, we haven't dealt into. General code offered to do the rules and regulations at the same time that they were doing the zoning bylaw, so we said, fine. If you're offering to do it and making it part of the package deal, we might as well have you do it. But from our standpoint at the planning board level. The idea was gonna be, they were going to do that, Chris was gonna work on all of this with us. And then we would devise changes we wanted to make to the rules and regulations, and the rules and regulations, we can just pass ourselves. We don't have to recount anything for anything else, so. Uh. That was kind of a plan, we were gonna move along, obviously. You know, Chris moved on and he's been gone for a while, we've had one interim, now we have another interim, uh, person. I think maybe we. We could take these questions and maybe for our next meeting, try to see if we can, how we wanna answer them, I mean, they have this all filled out based on how we, how we can answer it. And then maybe at our next meeting. Go over what we all feel we want the answer to be. On each of these, and then send that on. Onto general code so they can finish up doing what they were doing and then give us back something to review at that point. If, if you don't have an opinion or form an opinion on one of the questions, just make whatever notes you have, any questions, and we can raise those questions, or. One of us, maybe we will have an answer. Yeah. Emily, will the new, uh, interim plan be at the next meeting?
Yeah, she just. She had something conflicting tonight. She started last week.
Okay, great, yeah. She's very, very good and very organized from everything I can tell, as organized as you are. So, she's very, very organized and has dealt with a lot of the things that we're dealing with. And while we only have her four days a week and it's.
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours a week. Um. She, she has made representations, which I have no reason to not believe, um, that she can, um. Push through a lot. Uh, especially this technical type of work that we're working on, seems to be her specialty, so, um. She has already got us signed up for the, um, updating of our. Uh, what was it, so was it so, hazard mitigation program that we were behind on, she's already got that forwarded out, our money applied for. Uh, get that all moving along, so that'll get all up to date, she's only been back on board with us for a week and first three days are just meetings, so. So, she's definitely gonna hit the, hit the road running and it seems very, very, very good. It was. Uh. When we were speaking with her, sort of, the interview for the permission, it was a lot of talk of, would you just do it the whole time and come here and, and do the whole job? But that's, that's not where she's at right now, she kinda has her own consulting company.
She'll enjoy working here so much.
So much, that, well, we don't overwhelm her right at the beginning, because there's a lot of things that are. There's a lot of things that have been on the back burner for a long time, so.
Definitely.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, I can't remember questions about this, says, uh, displaying a hundred and sixteen questions, but there's ninety. So, what about the other ninety-seven? Uh, there were a lot of the questions. Uh, part of it was requalification, um, a number of these questions were answered by Chris. And the same thing happened with the requalification question, yeah, a lot of them were fairly simple questions that Chris had gone through and just said, no, that one's no, yes, this one's yes, the, the. Well, he did everything he could do, the remaining were ones that, as a group, we have to make some sort of decision. Some sort of decision, so they, they have been narrow, and this is a lot of it's been answered, really. Yeah, we're down to nineteen questions. So my only other question about this is where it says revise as follows, you're not really asking for suggestions from every planning board member for changes to the bylaws, are you? Well, these are the rules and regulations, um. Some of these we have to, we're gonna have to come up with some decisions, but we don't have to, don't try to come up with like a full rewrite, I just. Take a look at it and say, you know, what makes sense here, and some of this, we're gonna have to probably refer on to town council. Or talk to general code more about what some other options would be.
Yep.
Uh, to do, so, that's what we had to do with a lot of, well, not all of it came in from the zoning part, but a lot of that we were. Pretty quick decisions on, so, uh, we'll just do the best we can with this and see what we come up with. And then we'll, we'll take that at the, up at the next meeting. And, uh, see what we come up with for answers on these, so we can get back to them, so they can just continue their work.
So get some homework.
Yeah, a little bit homework, yeah. So I don't, but, I mean. What's the easiest way for me to get a copy of the rules and regulations test?
I'll suggest you do it to all three of the new board members.
They didn't get, we don't get the hard product packet anymore? With all this? Yeah, not printed, we don't print the copies anymore, okay. Yeah.
So it's got, this says November, uh, eighteen twenty twenty-three, so it was just like the, the original.
This is the original questions that came back from them, that Chris then answered at that time. And. Subsequently, he was moving on, so. He right on that time, by the time he got the questions back, he had answered what he could answer in a minute. Over thereafter.
So these are just waiting for us to get to?
Uh.
Or do they come back and say, oh, by the way?
I think they came back, so by the way, they have done this.
Yeah, uh, they were left unanswered and they said, uh. Do you wanna do anything with this, you can add to the board.
Yeah, yeah, I think we should do something, at least get back to them on these, so they can, they can get something put back together. And again, the rules and regulations, we don't have to go before town meeting or do any of that, so. Just, just more something to deal with as we deal with it. Again, I think we're still, even though our new meeting person is funny, very good. Still another item that we need to have the town plan in place, really to do, to finish it off and do anything. Yeah, so we can do what we can for now and try to keep them moving along, that would be the best. Alright, so thanks for that, right? Now we got. Meeting, the liaison. I. We have the interested party in the zoning bylaw recodification, I will start off, uh, so we had another meeting. General code. Sent the group, sent us over and then sent over to the group, um, their recodification of the bylaw. It was not what I was expecting and or hoping to receive, so we had a. Zoom call meeting with general code and the zoning, uh, recodification group. To talk about what they had put together for us and given us, and we got a, a little. I see where the disconnect happened when, uh, Chris brought general code on, they. We had already. Worked on a red line of the bylaw where we were pulling all the uses out onto a use chart, and we were pulling all the processes, all the rules and regulations. Into their own article. And we had played around with reorganizing the numbering and some other things within the bylaw. So we had a red line version that started with valid, that was doing all of those things. And we had agreed upon. Use table based on the uses that are already in the bylaw, to pull them all out, so we had all that kinda put together. Chris, when he hired general code. Uh. Uh. Phrasing this wrong, but directed, they asked the question and he directed them to do just what they would normally do from the very beginning without taking into account that red line or breaking out. The, uh. Uses onto the use table. So that's what they were starting with, and that's the first thing that they offered, and that generated a list of questions like this, of which Chris answered most of those that he could. And in the meantime, the rest were. Being left to us, Chris leaves, all that doesn't happen, the group. We answered all those questions, gave that back to them, they gave us. The first edition of the recodification, all it is is renumbering and taking our exact bylaw away, it is not pulling out any of the uses, it's not pulling out any of the things that we had done in all the red lines.
So you're not giving them that other.
No, they had. But he had asked them to do that version first, and my guess was, would be knowing Chris for the short time that we knew, but knowing Chris. He wanted that first, and then he was gonna give him his red line to say, this is the base, this is the renumbering, and this is our current bylaw. He was gonna review that and say, yeah, that's right, then give them the use table pullout and the red line version. So they have it already, they had it already anyway, but they have it again now because we wanted to verify that they got it to begin with. And now they're waiting for some more direction from us, the working group is going to be going through the red line. To make sure we're happy with what was being done in that red line and answering the questions Chris had put aside in there. And then we're gonna push that over to general code and they're gonna try to incorporate, try to incorporate that back into the, into the recodification that they're doing. So I think what, what ended up happening was, they gave the first version of what they were planning to give, it just wasn't what the version. Our group thought we were gonna be getting. So it's not nearly as far along as we thought we were going to be. Step one instead of step two. Yeah. Pretty, so, I was expecting step two and three to be in there, and all we got was step one that I was like, all that is is renumbering and moving stuff around. And taking out duplicate wording and duplicate, if, getting rid of some of the cleanup stuff, but. That's as far as it is right now, we have to go through this, the group now has to digest the entire red line that was going on. Um, which will take them some time to do. I'm familiar with most of what was there, but even for myself, to go, I gotta go back through it all again, so that's what. Where the group is now, um, sadly, my expectation would be unless we move through that red line pretty quickly and everybody's pretty happy with what it is. We probably won't have anything to come to in March, in March, yeah, there clearly wouldn't be. The upcoming fall, right, but for March, it's be. If I would say before, I thought we were gonna be ninety percent sure we were gonna get there now, should. Whether we'll get there on time to do the recodification, so, the recodification is not going to be making wholesale changes to parts. Of, of the bylaw as far as making their policy decision.
It's kind of, we're looking at the next year, do you think it, that, uh, it will make sense to have the, um, the recodified? Codification and then like our proposal.
And then the separate proposed changes, I think, I think we would propose them as two different articles, here's, here's the base.
Yeah.
And then each of the parts of the bylaw that we'd be doing substantive changes to.
Sure.
Would each be articles, as if we do do them, some people say, oh, you just do it all at once and then everybody go, ah, not this town, it doesn't. So we're gonna do it in each of the articles, one at a time, people can decide up or down which way they wanna go on that.
But you don't think that they need to be separate, you don't need to go do the classification one town meeting and then talk about.
Ideally, that's what we were going to do, but I think if we're gonna be another year out, we'll have enough time to propose it all separately. Ideally, we would have the recodification now and then tell everybody, then we're gonna come forward at the, the next town meeting with these dozen to fifteen changes of the substantive issues and, and. Making the recodification. The past, just a, a, the easier process to do, this is the bylaws, we have it now, all you've done is break out the uses onto a use table, all same you. But we might, we may actually propose a new use table that has. Yeah. Get rid of video stores and add in some other things that everybody needs to have. Um, doing that and, and the rules and regulations be, be pulled out as ideal as we want, that's all we really want from general code. Is that red line version. Fixed up and sussed out and done to the bylaw, and then we would have something to bring, so hopefully, they take a look at it and, and they say this isn't bad and we can deal with it. And get it out to us, and if they can do that, then we can have any time, that would be ideal, if we get that done, that'd be, that'd be fantastic. That's where we are on, on that one, but like everything else, that's been, can, it's keep down the road all the time because the next thing we have is like. M D T A. Yep. The U, we keep getting another. Yes. Well, you can do it by right, can't do anything about that one.
Well, actually, you guys, you have a choice to create, right?
Well, we, we can.
By February, otherwise you have to adapt the state.
We talked about it a little bit, and the only real regulation that we, we could do, is it? The one thing you can outline is to say they can't be used for short-term rentals, which is, I think. What we would end up having is we don't have a short-term rental bylaw.
Right.
Um, I think we. Put it in there that it's prohibited because the state says you can prohibit that, so. Um. But beyond that, we did talk about it before, like what other regulation we doing, like site plan review, but. If you think about it. All it is, is part of a house that's already there, whether it's connected or not, and or. A new structure that they're gonna put on the property, which has to meet setbacks and lock coverage, and has to. Get in with septic system or whatever bedrooms it's gonna have in it. What are we gonna look at? I mean, I don't know what we're gonna look at, I mean, there is gonna, there would really be anything more for us to regulate than the building department regulates. With allowing another structure onto a property. It's just, in the past, they wouldn't allow a structure that was gonna be for a rental or occupancy, but now it's by right. So to further regulate it, what, kinda what we discussed was, if it come before us for a site planner view and all, well, not. Inside the setbacks and it's not over the lock coverage, we'd, we'd just be doing the same thing the building department already does at that point. Doesn't require special permits and there's no other reviews. And all it is is a residential use, you only allow one. So. I believe we kinda came to the conclusion it wasn't. Regulation for us to be doing.
But, uh, town council was trying to take a look and then back to us, have we heard anything from her?
No.
She was gonna like draft a bylaw, yeah. Haven't gotten that yet.
Well, that was for the, the short-term rental aspect, right?
So, well, right, she was going to, and I think you have to talk to the definition, yeah, I think she's gonna put it all, sort of package it all for us.
Yeah, so we have the definition, and this will be the definition state whether it could be used for short-term rental or not. As of right now, short of us doing a short-term rental, which we, it's being talked about, being suggested that we do. I think we need to, we need to memorialize at a minimum that it can't. Or they, or they, some be, become used to that, so.
Yeah, and does that have to go to town meeting then?
Um. On the A U. Definitions, there are any problem, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, anything we're adopting that's outside of. Just allowing it by right.
Yeah.
Or whatever, so if we're gonna stipulate the short term. The state has said you can restrict it to not allow short-term, so if we're gonna do that, we have to memorialize that in the, in the, in the bylaw, and I think we have to put the whole definition of the U. We don't have it, so, so that needs to come forward with whatever it's gonna say about can't be used for short-term or whatever. And, so then separately, Wayne brought up that, the suggestion that we really do need to do something with a short-term rental bylaw in the town.
Yeah.
It's that or you gotta. Put it straight out into the bylaw that they're not, not allowed. Because right now it's just wishy-washy. You can't do it because the bylaw doesn't say you can do it. That becomes difficult to control, so.
Well, and the police.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only way you police it is if your neighbor complains.
Yeah. So, and right now, if one neighbor isn't complaining, then that person gets away with it.
Yes.
And the neighbor who had a complaint doesn't get to do it anymore.
Right.
So, not exactly a fair system.
Yeah.
But I don't know, I mean, as I said, we had the town meeting, which had a very sticky situation and other things were going on there besides doing Airbnb rentals on the property, there's a lot happening there.
Yeah, that's right.
But that's the largest, my understanding is the largest town meeting the town's had, close to a thousand people showed up. Only fifty. Go on his side of, you know, having that allowable use on the property and a lot, you know, a number of people, I don't know who else had anybody come up to, a number of people came up to me and said they don't wanna allow short-term rentals. So. If we are going to strictly prohibit it, we need to put that in the bylaw that we do, short-term rentals is a new type of use. It wasn't, it used to happen in the past, but not to the point of having Airbnb in this type of platform that has now made it much easier for people to do it. And if that's gonna be a use we're gonna prohibit, we need to put that in our bylaw that's a prohibited use. And let the town vote which way it wants to go. Now meeting will decide what's gonna happen, so. So the idea, the idea I had was, it'd be. An amendment to the bylaw that prohibited it as an option for the town to vote on. Separately, a bylaw that deals with it and puts restrictions on it, and what, um. Be likely a minimal amount of how much we will allow or what kind of trouble you can get into before you lose your license to do it. Wow.
Didn't pass.
The town decide.
Didn't pass, um, have a passage to be back to, to come up with a short term.
That's what I think was coming with the A D U stuff, I think.
Was it two separate ones that they're interrelated?
And they're interrelated, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's why we were asking him for that.
Is there gonna be any analysis of, um, tax income that could potentially be accrued from?
Some was done the last time around.
It was.
It's not particularly much. It's not particularly much.
Yeah, okay. But was it, it wasn't done by, was it done by the um? By somebody in the town? Because I thought that I wasn't.
The town looked it over, but it was done by the the proponent.
That's right.
And you, if you think, if anything, they were exaggerating to the high side. And so the town, uh, somebody had reviewed it from town, just saying. Yeah, yes, if there's this many of them, it would generate about this much, or town council would get it, you know, be around it. So they were looking at. I think they said twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars was what it was coming up to. Doesn't necessarily justify somebody. Any somebody to keep track of. And that's my, I guess. These sites automatically, if the town. Has a surcharge or whatever, automatically Airbnb charges the tax and then sends it to the town, that sort of a thing, but. I don't know how you would know if somebody was starting that issue somehow. Getting around circumventing. However, they were doing the rent. And they could do the rental on their own and it's not too weird, we'd have no idea.
It's different, well, other municipalities require you to get licensed, so you keep track of the licenses and. That way, you know, and there's inspections and, you know.
You keep track of the license, but how you know exactly how many weeks they are renting that? I mean, if they don't report it to you directly, it's not, Airbnb, I understand, if you signed up from there, they're gonna report it. Individuals doing it, are they gonna report it to pay the tax? I don't. I don't, I just think it, I think we become a. A administrative nightmare to deal with potentially.
Well, a lot, I mean, a lot of towns on the Cape have it and they are getting some pretty significant revenue from.
They have a lot of houses that are rented all.
They do, they do, but I mean, we have, I mean, last look, we had what, close to forty?
Forty that were advertised.
Yeah. So.
Doesn't the state actually collect money? So I thought somebody said that the state is actually collecting extra money dollars from.
I think they might be.
So that's another metric.
Mm-hmm, to look at, you know, how much they collecting, what would ours be be or whatever. Somebody had looked into that. When we were dealing with that last article. So it 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 had been looked into, but I know it wasn't, it wasn't coming out to be some huge amount of money, yeah, just because a lot of the places while they do. Rent them, they rent them for a couple of weeks and that's it. The rest of the time they're using the house, so. And the other danger is, and this was a lot of people were complaining with what he was doing and what he was proposing. The other danger can become, people can come in and start buying up some of these, they're especially worried. Out on the garden where some of the houses are smaller, everything that that investment groups would come in and start buying them up and just renting them out.
Yeah.
And they were no longer a family living there or a family coming for the summer or anything else, and now it's just gonna be. Party after party after party on both sides of your place because somebody came in and bought it for. Five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars and rents it out on a weekly basis for six, seven thousand dollars, whatever they're gonna get. In the summer. For the rental. And our bylaw, the way this is set up and the way that. Um, everything in the town with historical. You know, just the history of the town and everything else, all the zoning is based around. One family, one acre owner occupied. Properties, it's not set up for, town's not really set up as rentals. Or apartments or. Again, our zoning doesn't even allow you to build condos without going forty B, so. Um, it's always been that way. Is that a good thing or bad thing? I don't know, but that's what town meetings always voted for. And we did the comprehensive plan, that's what people still said they wanted. They wanted some diversity, but it all comes back to keeping the town less lawyer, so.
Yeah.
So. I don't know, I mean, the ADUs may open that up some, but. I don't see somebody spending three hundred thousand dollars to build. A rental on that. Nine hundred square foot building that has. Short of you being able to finish off something over your garage that you already have or whatever. Then you can upgrade your septic system. It's not gonna be cheap to get. Two thousand dollars a month rent out of it. Doesn't make a lot of sense. It'll be interesting to see what happens. I think it'll make a lot of the ones that were. Uh. Pre-existing non-conforming multiple residences that we have. The bunk houses and the other things that have always traditionally been rentals, just. Clean those up and now the, in the expected, nobody has to worry about. You know, looking the other way on anything that was there, because we have a lot of those pre-existing multifamily. Properties in town. Multiple resident properties in town. Um. I think that last count was. Think you're fifty some odd, almost sixty. Properties that are. Were zoned in. In there as pre-existing non-conforming multiple residents. Those apartment already. On there or outbuilding, there's already a separate rental prior zone. So. Um. Those will obviously be able to hit. Cleaned up and not have to worry about themselves and it's a lot. Again. A lot of them are probably larger than that, so they're still pre-existing non-conforming. So. This is the first bylaw we gotta get through.
So. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we're trying to pin down the deadline days.
They feel like we'll be on that, don't have a lot of time as well.
Yeah. Deadlines are all wrapped, so we're really setting our own deadlines. When is the last possible, because we have the public hearing, we have to get on the.
Yeah.
In the open house from seventeenth and twenty-first, so October, that week in October is sort of the. Um, not the last shot, but it's the the final, you know, public exposure of that and anything from that point. Just based on what you were saying, it's gonna be a very monetary kind of.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, we need to get it ready for. Is it October? Seven that we have to have the bylaw itself ready for the war?
Um, so.
Or do we have more?
I got an email from Rainie at five fifty, um. The final language for all articles to their office by October twenty-third.
Oh, okay.
So we can just have like place over their language.
That's a long time to set, that's very. All right, so we're gonna put. The language in based on the, whatever the most recent draft is at this point, just as a placeholder.
Yeah.
And then the adjustments can be made in the final will be, you know, on the twenty-third. Okay, okay, well, that's good, that's.
And I, you know, as I mentioned before, I. I feel that would benefit the working group greatly. To get more constructive and positive feedback with this group, because we're the zoning experts. Working group is.
Yes.
Brag tag.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, like, one of the things that came up as being with residents yesterday, and they're concerned about things like. You know, an automap, since there's no access on an automap, that's gonna be the back. And what are they gonna put in the back? Dumpsters, pumps, fans, machine rooms. Right, so the question, you know. That I want to ask this group is can the bylaw contain or restriction something like, you know, on the, on the developed campus that. You know, mechanicals or utility areas within like two hundred feet of existing residence? Is that something?
Is that, is that what the sign that you can come in?
Uh, this will be site plan, it's all gonna be site planner review, so I thought you were. I think we're allowed within this to have larger than normal buffers, right? Like the fifty foot setbacks, we can, we can, we can provide larger buffers and like say. To any neighboring residential. Areas. I mean, I brought those as a fifteen foot setback, but I think we can require like a tree buffer.
Right, and that's what we have at this point, and that's what we have now.
Fifty feet.
Fifty.
Okay, so that's, I mean, that's quite a lot. Fifty feet, I mean.
Not according to the neighbors.
But you can't have two hundred feet, that's a whole.
I know. Yeah, that's about, I'll try to explain it, fifty feet.
Fifty is a lot.
That's twenty-five percent of the land area.
Yes, yeah.
How big is this room? Would you say it's just twenty-five feet wide?
Oh, this is thirty to forty.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I mean, you, you, I wonder if you, it's something like that, it's like, imagine that it's this wide and ten feet more. And it's gonna be full of fully benches.
Yeah, and that's not the, that's, that's the tree buff.
Well, and I, you're, you're trying to make the argument to me, and I'm trying to make to them, so I appreciate it. I'm asking you, what about this idea of trying to push? You know, intrusive urban infrastructure away from existing residences, that's really.
I would think with the, with the site plan review, the placement of dumpsters and those sorts of things, we. We always deal with that.
Right, and there is some language in there about screening.
Yeah.
But not location.
Not. Well, there, there's no language in, in what the state has given us about location of it. That always becomes. If we say you gotta put it where you want the apartment, we say you gotta put it over here.
Yeah.
So we, we would have say in that, that piece is a puzzle, as far as the mechanicals for. The buildings, I mean, isn't our, and maybe this is an assumption, but we, we're thinking they're gonna be building condos. Buildings more or less, right, not.
Well.
High-rise apartments and stuff, so.
That's, that's the meat of the conversation, it's really hard to get to because there's so much smoke and.
Yeah.
Big bass line around.
Yeah.
Uh, and one of the things that Brian is really excited about, which is really nice, is the idea of trying to include. Form-based code, okay, examples, this is what we want to see.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that.
That tells developers.
Seems to be.
What you're gonna pull through easy, but.
Right, an idea that we should help the residences understand what to expect.
Yeah, yeah.
But.
Nobody.
The bylaw.
The apartment blocks. But what's a bylaw that would gain from the state would allow?
Don't get that's what we can, and they would probably prefer that, it's more.
Well, yeah, I mean, according to this.
You know, the prevailing. Development philosophy, you know, the. The higher the permitted density, the higher the land value, sir.
Mm-hmm.
My reasoning, and so they're pushing, you know, we want to see five, six stories.
Yeah.
Hundreds, hundreds and hundreds, and so they're already way, way up where we are.
Where we are.
And we're trying to fight the battle on the low end, you know, to keep it.
Yeah.
Down, and I'm trying to, uh. I created a rough lot cover calculator just to get a handle on this, to understand, you know. And so, you know, you could put in your standard house dimensions and lot coverage, and I also wanted to explore. Uh, floor area ratio, and because I heard about this, or ratio, where you take the total square footage of the structure, all floors. Compare that to the lot area.
Yes.
Yeah, so you took a simple town, almost like point oh one.
Yeah.
And, and urban density is one.
Yeah. How, are we able to restrict the number of stories?
Yes, yes, okay, there's two stories and three stories.
Okay.
Okay, and then four.
And four, because we already have four there. But yes, we're only allowing two and three. Anywhere else doing it, I mean, that's pretty reasonable, that's basically what we have now.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the other thing I should bring in is that the, uh. So even that we. With the planning, we work forward it to the select board, the select board group, included two small parcels that were next to Bonji's. And those were to be slated as mixed use soon, because they're already in business. But the M T A communities. Guidance requires that mixed use be three stories, two stories. And so we said, we didn't want to send three stories on the street, so we removed those. Yeah, that's. My only concern with that is that. Potential layout, those two parcels are probably where the road. Get it away from that.
Yeah, yeah.
So by removing those parcels, I think it makes it more problematic. Access to the pond. Because it's restricted to three.
Okay. But, but there'd be no reason you can't put a driveway in over a lot, it's not an M T A.
Of course, yeah, but you have to buy.
You gotta buy a land. Yeah, yeah, and those are owned by somebody else, that Bonji's that owns. Okay. Well, the neighbors will like it.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll be buying those properties out there in seconds.
So I mean, that's the main thing we're. Trying to pin these things down so we can get, you know, get any language, and it's really a question, how much playing around with the bylaw are you doing?
Or, or are we taking kind of what the state and town council gave us?
Well, what the state gives you is uh maximum density in nothingness.
Okay.
And then what we're doing is bringing in relevant language from the plan development, residential compatibility to.
Okay.
Imprint it with the Duxbury standards.
Okay.
Which is a little bit.
But was that something that we said somewhat of canned version from town council review? Or are you guys trying to create this whole thing from?
Right, well, it's, Stan Tech is in the driver's seat.
Okay.
So we.
So therefore, you know, the bylaw, and in looking also, and you're looking at, well, this is kind of what Duxbury says about these things, and working with that.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay. Right, so my only concern is that when we take a chunk of existing bylaw, I mean, or Stan Tech takes. And then. Massage it and drops it in, how do we know how well that's really tracking?
Yeah.
What we have, and then the other thing that it raises, of course, is pointing earlier, is that all the zoning is acre zoning, so family, so. Just even very principled lifting that out and dropping it into multifamily.
Yeah, it's a little.
Might not really. Trying to examine.
Does Stan Tech have any sort of a canned version they use in the other towns?
Well, they all start from the state baseline at this point.
Yeah, okay. I was just wondering, I would assume, other towns have already gone to vote on this, it must have had some sort of a bylaw put together.
Yeah, but I mean, they're all telling.
Okay, okay, so how does? The Stan Tech feel they're gonna be able to get this put together in a usable form, and you guys feel like they're, they're getting voted on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's been a little rough, without a planner, who knows?
Yeah, yeah.
Usually the planner is the person that's controlling the change rate and is the contractor and.
Yeah, this is.
The three of us.
While our, our, our. New temporary town planner has already dealt with some of this.
Yeah.
And I think will is going to be. Big help in the discussion I had with her today about what we have coming down the pipeline, this is number one, so.
Yeah, and she reached out to Steve and I several times.
Yes. Yeah, so if you guys can update her, she can hopefully help you guys out as well. Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, so we're in the short strokes.
Okay. Almost there.
Uh, Tag, you said, you asked something at the very beginning, it kind of had to do with design, like design control. So we don't, it's my impression is we don't have a lot of that in Duxbury, and so you're, you're, you're an alternate for the designer here, right?
Yeah, I resign.
Oh, okay. But it's, what is your experience been, have you been able to say like, yeah, that's a great idea, but wow, that is. Attractive, or that doesn't go with the rest of the neighborhood, or what we recommend, and we won't, but we can't much.
We don't have any teeth there.
We don't, so we, we can, we can recommend and that we can send them back and ask them to come back to us. And then recommend again, and then recommend those zoning board, but that's really all we have.
Yeah.
If they choose not to.
Because I'm wondering, Tag, if maybe, I, I, I don't know if this is gonna open up a can of worms, is there a way for us to say, because it, it's one of the, one of the, um. Uh. One of the objections that I'm hearing is that it does not in keeping with rural Duxbury, it's not the way it looks, this part of town is one acre lot. So would there, would there be a way to kind of impose or suggest that, um. Part of the design of this would have to be in keeping, somehow in keeping with the main one or all.
Yes, but right now we have. A, a brief paragraph that talks about, you know, illegal construction and then has the language to say, this is what we want, but it's really generic. It's literally a paragraph, a short paragraph, and so that's why we're interested in examining the form-based code. Because that actually gives you a visual example, this is a good thing. Uh, how is it enforced? That's a good question.
But I, I'm thinking we, we could somehow enforce it at the beginning.
Yes. Yeah, well, it'd have to be inside.
But.
But it's like. Well, it'll be in the site of that, we're gonna end up all in the site. Plan review, like, we don't like the way this looks, so we're not going forward with the permit, so you get something that we like, you know? That's what happens if the zoning board appeals all the time on the, on the forty B's. A lot of the discussion then becomes. And the developer's gonna wanna get through.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have to make it look like, but.
Yeah.
Yes, make it look like that, and then it's easier for us to say, yes, so.
Mm-hmm.
That's where, that's kind of. It'll basically be handled almost like. We can't stop it from happening, all we can do is negotiate how, what is gonna happen. Um, and we can talk about those things, and obviously they can appeal to the state if they don't like what we say, and we're back and forth on it.
Yeah.
And ideally, this is supposed to be set up so it's cookie cutter. Somebody can just do what they wanna do, but we do get site plan review, no matter what that can be. These can't look like that.
Okay, because I, I feel like this.
But then what do you do too? What if somebody comes along? What are the interesting developments? It's all modern, you know, modern architecture.
Right.
That's not common for the town, but it. Even bad either, so.
We have a new style, and it wouldn't be modern, right?
Mm-hmm, right, well, that's, I'm glad to bring that up, Scott, because that's one of the things that concerns me about really constraining it, is that, you know, this is a new neighborhood.
Yeah. It could get something that could look really nice, that would be.
More, getting a chance to, to really innovate, create something that's gonna make.
Yeah.
Builder happy, and residents happy, and the neighbors happy, I mean, there, there's a possibility for that.
Yeah.
And I hate to just slam that door shut.
Right, that's a really good point, Tag, so what if there was some mechanism, talking like talking to, and there are, I mean, there are a lot of different communities that have done this. Um, Duxbury's not very restrictive, though. I've looked in places where like, you know, you fill up your doors.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and there, there's, there, it's actually, there are pros and cons to that, and I will say, like, it's very pleasing to the eye to go, you know, to have some very consistent aesthetically, it's very pleasing. Um, but at the same time, it's like someone moves in, they wanna paint their door up to that, you know?
Yeah.
Um, so I do understand that, that's for everybody, um, but I wonder if, is there some language that we could put in there? That would be maybe kind of. I don't know, maybe not restrictive, but somehow. Has to go through a design process as well. Like, it's really the external, it's, it sounds to me like it's the external design that people are worried about, like, they're worried about.
What's it gonna look like?
What's it gonna look like in my backyard?
Mm-hmm.
I get that, and that's the, when the one, the one woman came here, like, it was just like, not in my backyard, like, so, you know, super loud, like.
One of the things that came up in the conversation yesterday was that, you know, because these folks. Most of them have been in the neighborhood for decades, and they were there when the villages of Duxbury was built, and one of the things that they did with that project was, um, after they. Clear a certain amount of land, they floated a balloon at the height of the building. So the people could see in their front yard and look out, and I see the balloon. And on that was. Key point in the progression, where people had all these, you know, it's gonna be a monstrosity, and then they can look.
Meanwhile, they then see with all, with, with vegetated setbacks that were put in place, you really can't see.
Yeah.
And if we're doing this similar setback situation here, which it sounds like. Where we are, that's similar to what was done over there.
Mm-hmm.
Shouldn't be taking all that visible, other than from the main road.
And even that more of it, the way the entrances.
Yeah. Yeah.
So Tag, what are some of the other concerns or protections that you're hearing?
Well, it's mostly traffic. Uh, but we have a couple of people who are asking serious questions about the water infrastructure.
All that.
What about, you know, the pipes and capacity, you know? They mentioned that there's a report out there in the states that the lakeshore well, closest well is at capacity.
Okay. And is, I wonder if there's anything within, within the, what the state is putting together that if. You put aside land for this, and it's gonna require. Be able to require the developer. Put in their own well, to run their own water.
Well, that came up, that was a question, and it was something that could happen.
Hmm. If there isn't enough, the town can't provide enough water. For the site to build out what's on the site, they can't build. We've had this happen in other subdivisions where they're just, there isn't enough water. On site, so they either have to do their own wells. Or each of, in most cases, each of the houses ended up with a well, or they had to bring in a larger water service. And if our well can handle it, then the town wouldn't be able to apply. Prove. A larger root pipe. I mean, that, that's another piece of puzzle. They may have to have their own water supply.
So how does the town know? They just go, okay, it's gonna be, you know, two hundred.
They know how much is gonna be drawn.
Be generated.
Based on P O.
Okay.
They do a calculation on how much water drive it'll have.
So.
That might be a question we need to ask the water department.
Yeah, I'm.
What would this many units mean over there with this? And, and. And the residents over there, as far as approving it, might say. Well, we're not having enough water, so what do we care if it's approved, but. The residents, one, another thing, obviously to. We, we, we need to remind them, that site's gonna be developed at some point. Something's gonna happen there. There was always a big push to make it into commercial property, adding more stores and shops and, and everything, but this. Be, would that be worse or better than this? I don't know, or at a minimum, it's gonna become a forty B. I mean, it's not just gonna be single-family housing, it's gonna be, it's a big property, it's gonna have a lot of condos.
Yeah.
And that's the discussion, the neighbors gonna, now, this will be better for a forty B or a M T A, they really. Don't back it forth on it, saying, well, you know, realize if you're looking at it side by side, probably you can say yes, but. Does that really make sense at the end?
I've been making the argument that the M T A sees locals only controlled, and forty B is state process, that's kind of out of our.
And a forty B, you wouldn't be getting a fifty-foot buffer. They're gonna be, their backyards are gonna be in your backyards. They're gonna build out that whole site if you. So. This does have some more control to it from that. From that standpoint, it's done, we're taking what could be done on the forty B spread out of the whole thing and condensing it into a small area. And they're still getting the same number of units, it's just they're getting higher density. So. Okay.
Scott, what are some other objections? Other than not in my backyard and the water?
Yeah, water, sewer.
Time, like.
Sewer's gonna be an issue for it.
Yeah. And it's fairly why high water tables over there.
Right, well, that's the other thing that they, you know, we all are concerned about, is the, if we get heavy spring rains, the water does come up. So.
I mean, that many units in confined spot, we don't have town sewers, you know, you have some isolated situations where we're doing pumping station. That's another thing the developer might have to do, deal with that all.
Good, all, yeah.
So.
And so there's been discussion about, for example, the fact that when the villages were built. Um, there's a lot of, you know, woodland foul land around it that they own in the back. Um. But I guess because of the runoff in the roofs and the parking lots. All that water went into the woods, and it was creating flooding back into the parking lot, they had to excavate it. Swell and water control feature. In woods, which still sometimes. Were fought.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, so it didn't actually completely solve the problem, so they're asking like, what about that? We had to do that right there.
They had to do that right there, but still keeping it off our property, but how would you keep this off our property?
That's. I can tell, you know, there are regulations about changing the raids, and that's really.
And that's still all gonna come down in the site plan review too, if you can't. Stop the water from getting onto neighboring property, then you can't. Develop it fully that way, you have to make adjustments for how it's developed. So, so none of those types of things are going to be. Circumvented by this, the site plan review is still gonna happen, we're still gonna make. Be able to make sure that they're maintaining their water, their sewer, everything else on site. I mean, all the controls that are all ready and placed, you can't just do whatever they want to do. This is a higher density situation.
And people don't understand, the system, I appreciate your comment earlier about, you know. Asking people to have faith in the process, they don't even know there's a process, all they know is that they can add a bit.
Right.
Because they're unsuccessful, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go on.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. They have to redo everything, how can this go?
Yeah.
So Tag, remind us, one is, I know you guys are talking about the schedule, can you just outline for us, what is the public, like, what is?
Well, the key dates are, public dates are October seventeenth, open house.
When does that be?
That's just like the meeting we had here last night.
Understand, there's informational.
Discussion.
Discussion.
We're having that. In the presentation rooms.
Yeah.
In the screen. In the back.
Okay.
It's in the back.
Seats three twenty.
Are you having community members submit questions before that date to? Uh, before the seventeenth, if they could, then maybe you guys can get a little bit.
There we have dozens of questions.
Right, yeah.
There will be three answers to.
We'll be trying to answer those in the presentation.
Yes.
I wonder if it makes sense if you guys consider doing a thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you have a website?
Just the town's.
Is that being publicized yet?
Don't be, I thought it was in.
Didn't mention that. Where else?
I'm positive they did that.
Hmm.
So that's.
I think they referenced that it's available at the town website.
What time is that, Tag?
Um, that's gonna be. Like seven, nine.
If, if the, if the pass isn't overlay cited there. There's still a lot of conclusion on a forty B, though.
No. It can still explain.
All the underlying.
Well.
You could just put single-family homes in there.
It goes right, oh, yeah.
It doesn't stop everything else, it's just an additional layer of things that can be done that we normally wouldn't allow.
And once, yeah.
Forty B on.
Public hearing is only twenty nine.
There.
About twenty first.
Twenty first.
Twenty first. Okay, seventeen twenty one and twenty three.
And are we going to have that here?
I guess, well, let's see what kind of turnout we get in the open house, to see if we have to do it here, or we have to do a bigger facility.
Good, but. This, and I wonder for that really.
A lot of times we can do it downstairs here, there's a lot more of that. The downstairs main. Well, we'll use that move.
How many people could go in that, in that room?
I'm not positive.
Yes.
They put all the chairs together. But we don't have them six feet apart anymore. As the majority of the opposition consented on the autumn F. Residents. Not so much.
Well, certainly from what I'm seeing.
Yeah.
Do we have a list of the grants that will? Go away if we don't pass this?
Yeah, we have the amount of money we took in the last two years from grants that we would not have received, it's two point something million, so two point seven million. Two million of that for the beach. And it was like.
Seawall thousand that we're spending right now, that could disprove that, and then there's another couple million.
There's a couple million in the beach seawall thing that could go away, which I, I still. Question whether they would be pulling that. Funding from anybody dealing with beach erosion seawalls, that the state would pull that away from you because you didn't put in more housing.
Well.
That seems a little rough.
Which one of you is on the sidewalk committee?
This is me.
You, so that's you, you guys are applying for half a million dollar grant.
We are, yeah, by October first, right? That's the middle deadline is October first, yeah.
And this is the one that's our second go around, and the first bite of the apple, they said, you're really close, you'll get it next time.
There was some crucial pieces left, I did the show application last time.
Yeah, we put it.
We put in plain ass, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Because I'm wondering if, um, that might be really, a really good time for your committee to come out and support that, recognizing that that, and that also would potentially open up sidewalks in that part of town too.
Yeah.
Um, but if you were to email your membership and explain kind of like the, what, like best case, worst case scenario.
We have a meeting next, next Monday, so, or. And, and I don't think the state has outlined what funding. They're gonna. Mix nay on if you don't.
Less of some, but they also included underneath that, that it might not be. All of the ones that are affected.
Yeah, of course, because they wanna keep us guessing.
But the wild garden will be the issue, so the hearing is beginning of October, I don't foresee that.
They, they may make a decision before the November eighteen special.
Hmm, really?
Okay.
Only because it is such a hot light night, so I would, you know, typically they wouldn't that quickly, but. Hard to talk to those students.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, yeah. Yeah, so it'll be interesting to see timing wise, if that decision comes out prior to the. Eighteenth, because now we'll have more clarity as to. Did the A G overstep?
Mm-hmm.
You know, they're gonna send it back for revisions.
Unfortunately, uh. I'm, I'm not, you know. I'm bred old briefs and everything else, but it's pretty clear that the. That case is really about the classification of. Nope, no, it's traffic transit. And they're trying to get reclassified as adjacent.
As adjacent, not.
Yeah, so.
Like.
Well, they got the trough.
Troughs, yeah.
So, I don't know, as far as what, what we're wrestling with, I don't see how that will impact us at all, unless there's some major, they reach in and. You know, we'll tinker with it.
That's what nobody knows. They come in and say, the, the carrot and the stick aspect of the statute. Is not as unconstitutional. C P U.
Yeah, you know, if they say that, then everybody would say, hey, well, we think that's wrong too, so. And they already have a bunch of towns.
Right.
Objecting and or voted this down.
Yeah.
There's also one of towns that have voted for it.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's what does it really get the press.
They, well, they voted for it, and we don't know how they set it up.
Right.
Did they set it up on quasi-land, nobody's ever gonna do?
How did they set that?
How many of those?
Do they overlay districts that are already built out?
Or any of the.
Yes.
Or any of them gonna be your.
Town is not.
Yeah.
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 Right. I don't even know that the state's doing that review yet, no, I don't think they're gonna do, even the ones that have applied, put it in, passed it. The state hasn't reviewed any of that to see if it's.
The three.
Happen.
There's three of them. Approved already, okay, so they have, and then there's like, you know. Twenty eight that are in the pipeline.
Yeah.
Which of the three that are approved, are they local?
Oh, I don't.
Post-plant. Because I, I was wondering. I mean, presumably they've also had, they've also gone through the process, and have they recognized, sometimes they've done, they could do a retro, oh, gosh, this is, this worked really well, boy, this didn't, I mean, I wonder if it would be helpful to talk to the towns. Actually, any, is any person involved with this?
I mean.
Does she have any? Are you guys working with her? Would she have any insight?
We definitely work.
Well, you know, it's, it's. Interesting that you mentioned it, because she hasn't engaged with the work at all.
Okay.
It may help.
Would you ask them?
Whatever's going on with. Same. It's intact. She's gonna have to do that too, town council's gonna have to look at all of them, so. And I think that's kind of what they're waiting.
Oh, they're waiting for that.
Come up with something.
And then they may have other suggestions based on what they saw.
So that's like, so our scheduling, when is that supposed to happen? When do we need to send it to the Amherst?
Yeah.[1441.54]
That's not.
So you said you'd like more feedback. Would it be helpful to the committee to have a working session with us?
I don't think so.
Make that like one meeting, nothing else.
Well, I mean, we have the uh public hearing.
That's gonna be like the last.
I know.
The last.
Yeah, so we have. On the time in the beginning of October. Well, it's like, I mean, the group has all the the information as far as what we were doing with it prior to it going to. Um. Would had the joint conversations with the select board.
Yeah.
The select board chiming in on what they wanna want to do here. Um, I think it's really just gonna come down to what are we gonna get for questions and what is the group that shows up at town? Oh, the town meeting pro or con? We can't, it's hard to tell. Like I said, we, we had that. This is basically, I know there's gonna be one or two other articles about funding suppliers may on this, but it's basically. A town meeting of one hour. They tend to get good turnout.
Yeah.
As was proven by the one we had a thousand people show up. We had a thousand people show up and I sat there going, this many people here and I'm recognizing people that. I don't know what side these, which way this is gonna go. Had I known the way it was gonna go, I would say, why don't we just move the question now and vote because you. It was gonna go nine hundred and fifty fifty. So we didn't really, we didn't really have to spend two hours sitting going over stuff. Um, yeah. So the question, we really will have no idea. It'll probably be a large group, I believe, because everybody in town, this is no different than building school. Everybody in town is gonna be interested in this. Uh, the question is, what way is the majority of the town meeting? We don't, we don't really have a good, a good feel for that. We don't, we don't really, I don't think, I don't think you're getting anything.
No, I mean, I certainly haven't gone to campus and knocked on doors over.
No, but anyway, but they're not running, breaking down the door saying, we have a problem with this. What you do see with. A couple of things that have come up in the clip where like there's been a couple of articles, people.
Yeah.
Have written in that, you know, how can the state do this? So there's a lot of that. Nobody anywhere likes. The government to tell them what they're gonna do so without having to say it, without having to say it. So this is one of those situations. We don't have to say it. We have to do it. And it's, and it's so bad, it's to the point that saying, we're not gonna give you your funding. And this is the other thing. It's worse. They're not giving us funding. We gave them all the tax revenue. It's our money. It's already our money.
There's been a few Facebook posts of a lot of misinformation out there. Thought about jumping in. No, putting some facts, but yeah. Not ready for that. That's why, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But I just want the facts out there. They were so misinformed. It was just harbingers.
And that's what comes to town meetings.
Yes, that's actually what I was thinking. It's like, it's, it's all about communication. Those people don't know. They wanted, they wanted to know this woman came. She wanted to know. She's trying to educate herself, which is awesome. Uh, but I do think that that's gonna be the really big thing because like we're talking, you guys are working so hard, but nobody else, they don't. People, they go to one meeting, they, they're even a comfort. They go, yeah, that's it.
That's it.
If they're lucky, if they come to the meeting, they don't come to the public hearing, they just show up to the town meeting.
Yeah.
Right. Ask the questions there.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting for that smart person I always listen to to get up there and have a problem with this nonsense. Why I'm gonna vote. I mean, they don't, they don't educate themselves at all. And that's the, that's the frustrating thing in maybe it's in every town, but especially in this town, like passing. Bylaw changes, any, anything like this. It takes one person to go, oh, I don't know what we're doing here. And everybody goes, oh, no. No, 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 no.
Take this, there's probably no way around this, but have you talked to like police, fire, school, like the outage? The added.
Lot of resources. That's good. I, I foresee that will be one of the.
That's one of the questions.
One of the big main.
Yep. Yeah, and that's, that falls under the rubric of fiscal impact analysis, budgetary impact analysis.
I would assume they can give us that sort of information. They have a rough idea of what we have at that. Pretty, you know, a denser area. How much is that? Or this many more people means how many more police, fire and school? I mean, what we have to do if there's this many more people.
Right. All right. Well, but that requires making a guess.
Making a guess.
As to the school age population, young adult, old, which would be just a guess. So.
Yeah.
You know, people want answers and there, there's nothing. There's literally nothing. There's no way to answer those types of questions. Well, this is what I've been.
Break the age.
I've been trying to.
That was the question. So you cannot, you cannot make this.
And there's nothing to say, and I know people make this argument of that. Well, if it's only two bedrooms, there's only gonna be, you know, the parents and one kid. It's like, nobody's ever heard of a bunk bed.
You kept three, four kids in that room. It's happened. It happens. I used to have it all the time. So.
My wife grew up in a poor veteran house with eight siblings.
Exactly. So you're sharing rooms. So, um, that, that whole idea that all it's only two bedrooms, that means nobody's gonna be there is.
So to your point, I mean, I've suggested to the working group that we should at least uh render some sort of a bracketed.
Yeah.
Minimum range, minimum, maximum expected, potential average, something like that.
Why don't we just?
Nobody wants to do.
What I mean.
Stays for violent creep.
I mean, it's a perfect example of a denser area. We would have a similar demographic, I would think, who show up in either one. And what does that mean to the police and fire?
And.
And the school system.
I haven't, uh, I haven't apprehended that information myself, but I participated in CPC meetings where we discussed this for years. Um, and, um, you know, some folks uh working with are very eager to take that. That data and that example and then say, we learned this, let's apply it there. And my response to that is that. That was the first. So, you know, the town of Duxbury was wholly unprepared for that. And the town went through a painful learning process, uh, which included, and I think still includes. Um, you know, connections and with the management team, operations people and, and creating that feedback with young municipal services to the ownership. From the ownership to the residents to tighten things up. And that didn't exist. And now it does.
Yeah.
So I don't think we would be able to take an apples and apples comparison of what happened when we broke our teeth on, on creek and simply apply that directly to.
Yeah, I, I would, I would think they know what an operation we take some now.
Well, you would, but it really isn't that cut and drawn. It really is. I mean, an emergency response call can have. I mean, I'm listening from other sources, anywhere from the short number of hours attached to it to numerous hours attached to it.
Yeah.
And even that incident. So.
It is. Island Creek though currently is one of our most active.
Yeah.
Call areas. Or the police, fire and. In relative to anywhere else. So there's a lot more people. There's a lot more going on and a lot of it is rental, not ownership.
Yes.
And there is a difference when it comes to.
That's. Being paid. And people are, are asking that question. How you, is it gonna be rental or ownership? And they don't like the answer, we don't know.
We don't know.
You don't know.
You got an answer from town council? If it's rentals, do all the rentals count towards the uh ten percent bedroom for the forty B?
Yes. My understanding.
I thought town council was looking at that, but I don't.
If every answer I've ever had from this town council or prior town council is yes.
You just.
That rentals count.
Yeah.
Rentals count. The only rentals that didn't count are, you know, you're renting out. Space in your house.
Yeah.
You know, you get a in-law apartment that you made into an apartment that those didn't, those didn't count for whatever reason.
Because that made a performance, because that gets, that makes us closer to that ten percent threshold on the forty B.
Well, if they were all rentals, we'd probably make it over. But the other thing is that needs to be tracked and that needs to be certified every few years.
Would you maybe get people who are in other parts of the town that are against this would say, whoa, but if this isn't a rental. Community that gets us out there. Now I don't worry about forty Bs coming in other areas of the town.
Yeah.
Affordable. I don't know how much of this would end up being affordable anyway. We, we have to put a percentage on it, right? Ten targeting ten percent now and we're pursuing an economic feasibility analysis to allow us to target.
I was gonna say, but. Currently, if you're doing your forty B, five. If we're ten percent, we're shooting ourselves in the foot again. We're making it even harder to get.
That's why we're trying to push it up tomorrow.
Yeah. It's hard.
But they are all rentals or not condos?
We don't know. We don't know what they're gonna build. They don't know what they're gonna build. Yeah. All we know is that they can get this density.
Yeah.
If they wanna sell them as condos, they can sell them as condos.
Cause we can't.
Or single family houses. They can do whatever.
We can't be strictly used under the by, uh, to, to rental or.
No, no way. It just has to be this density.
Yeah, it's just the density.
So what does this density look like? This is what you're talking about before the form base would be like. So what does this density mean on this amount of land with these setbacks and these buffers?
Yep.
What can be built?
So that's what I was pretty early returning. I hooked up a little calculator to do different building dimensions, number of floors. You know, number of units, gives you how many square feet per unit. Uh, and then you put in a hundred eighty foot per parking space. Right now we're, we're. The draft includes a requirement of one parking space per unit. Full stop. Okay. So that it's a sort of minimum. We can't, we assume many developers can put in.
Put in more than that.
Means you're gonna deep wire. So you add the hundred eighty under the unit square footage and you can see where you fall as far as we're, so thirty five percent lot coverage is the other criteria. And so that calculator show me that it is possible. It does work. You could put in a couple of row houses, you know.
I was gonna say rural condos.
Yeah. You could put those on an acre plot very easily.
Yeah.
With parking in front or whatever. And that's, that's pretty tidy. That would probably be the simplest way.
Yeah.
So. Buildings that are multiple condo style units that are just row like town. Two story. Yes, they're pretty small, probably generally speaking.
Yeah.
And just all those in different sections all over the place.
That's one more. Big long row.
Yeah, and you could do, you know, sixty by sixty four squares with four or six or eight units in each one. Plunk a bunch of those down all over the place. There's many different ways it could be done.
Yeah.
To reach the density.
But it's generally probably not gonna look like. Single family home.
No.
That are jammed in next to each other. It's not gonna be that. They're gonna have to be connected with condo like in some way. Oh, actually. My guess is the developer will want to sell them versus renting all of those things.
Let me paint this picture for you. People have been asking, especially the older uh members of community, where you have small houses cottage style. We do clusters of cottages. Okay, let's, let's see what that looks like. So if you wanna do thirteen units per acre.
Yeah.
And you do like a thousand square foot house. You know.
It's not really.
It's all over the place.
Yeah, like a little forest, a little tiny house.
How are you gonna get to? That's gonna be.
All three foot paths.
It's all footpaths and golf.
Golf cart community.
They're legal on the street now, so.
Yeah. Oh, boy, not on, not on that main road.
Oh, my gosh.
But, um, so I mean, this is interesting what you can fit. What I'm trying to help, you know, paint the picture is it's all, people are just afraid. They're afraid of what's gonna happen. It's all gonna turn into a disaster. I mean, the more the woman who wrote in the cover said devastation, it's gonna devastate the neighborhood.
Yeah.
I need to send her a picture of. Norio. You know, any city.
Firewall into that. That's devastating. That's not what we're talking about. Well, it's a different level of disaster. For degrees, the whole.
Taking notes I did about all the comments that you got at the public hearing. I just wonder like when I did a years ago, I worked uh for a consultant and we did a committee uh. During conference plan is we basically had these big posters. We kind of like what we did in the conference. Post notes you put on the wall, like, what's your dream? And like, what's your dream for the water fund? What's your dream for housing? What's your dream for? Prince Parteet. I almost wonder if it like something like that, we had like a couple places, like what are your thoughts on? Is this, are you concerned, something like that and take those? Then for the public hearing, actually have other posters that kind of address all those.
Yeah, that's an excellent idea. That is typical sort of planning exercise to make sure you can do public input and then reflect it back.
And their input's gonna be no or yes. The input's about all it's gonna be.
Partially because we're so restricted on, on what it has to be.
Yeah.
By the state. So, and again, that just comes back to a lot of people don't like to be pushed around.
Yeah. Well, okay, that's like, yeah, that's.
That's the big hurdle. That's the big, big hurdle to doing this. This isn't something that we came up with because comprehensive plans said we should have really, really dense zone.
Yeah.
They did not say that anywhere. They wanted more diversity in housing, but not this. Well, people who are paying attention, you know, and aware of the comprehensive plan and now the housing production plan, you know, they do acknowledge the need. Yeah, yeah, we don't want this.
And it was happening all along.
Pushing us to do it.
Yeah, all these years, it's never been any of the ways that we're trying to come up with conservation clusters.
No, no.
Well, it wasn't, we didn't want that. We wanted that, but we didn't want to give any density bonus. No, no extra home for putting all that land aside.
So it's always been the always, and now it has to be yes.
Yeah, do we have to have the ICC uh that pick up the, the cluster um in place? Such a pipeline place or is that part of this or?
No, that's gonna be happening with the zoning changes. We just happen to be able to get, we have separate funding available to do that on different. The, um. Inclusionary housing and the conservation cluster is the other one we're working on with consultants.
It was at MAP, MAP U was working on that.
I mean, PC.
Well, we wanted to get the inclusionary housing back in there because we haven't been collecting any money for the housing authority. All that piece of the puzzle. And again, maybe we, we brought forward inclusionary housing, changed two town meeting. I said, I think we're getting confused here. We don't understand what we're trying to do and. And voted it down. And so we haven't been able to be in compliance um with the case law that was established. Now there's arguments to be made like, well, damn the torpedoes, we're gonna do it anyway. That was one of the approaches that was being taken. We, at the time, the planning board made the decision, no, we're not. We just set ourselves up to for the town to get sued every time. We try to implement something that there's now a case that says you can't do that. So. Rather stay out of lawsuits if you can for the time.
Being in a lawsuit bag, uh, you see in the clip, there's some people saying throughout time, why don't we just join with Marshfield and other towns and bring a lawsuit? Had, had that come up in the, in the initial town meeting or the initial uh open forum you had?
No.
That's really residents that are correctly affected.
Yeah. Yeah.
It was a term of the select for, I don't.
Some interested in that. It would be better if we could get more. So for that. That's not a, that kind of public community. That's. Public outreach.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like, it would really be great if we could get that on a front page of. Clipper prior to. If we can get it in there where a lot of people see it and say, we need you all to come out and tell us what you think. About what we're doing versus waiting till town meeting. You know, give us the input now, not later, not later. That's always frustrating. Frustrating part. Not that we'll be able to change that.
That's why I'm telling people, this is our change. In the ground, it's like, well, yeah.
Well, do you feel like, um, does anybody on the committee want to write letters saying like, hey, we're having a meeting. We want to hear your voice?
Yeah, no, we have. Alison won't want.
Yeah.
Offer to. So if we can get the Clipper on board, getting that in there just before the, just two weeks prior to like have it in there repeated.
Yeah.
Um, that would be good. They're usually pretty open on things like this. I think with our comprehensive plan, they gave us, they might have gave us like a whole page. To advertise that we were having our meetings on the comprehensive plan and everything. They've been pretty free about doing stuff like that. See what you can get out of, you know, get out of this anyway. Okay.
Is there anything else we can do to support the committee today?
Well, if, if you're willing to, maybe just a couple of us can sit with the working group as we look at the manual language. You know, so that you have a preview, some. Oh, we have our back and forth for temporary town planer doing it too.
Yes.
She, she, I think she's gonna be of great help.
Yeah.
Of great help. So.
Yeah, just. Oh, so I have something.
Yeah.
So the, um, this is actually kind of cool. I can pull it back up for you. Yeah, okay. So the um customer residency task force, multiple energy and sustainable Duxbury are holding an energy pair. At the high school, Saturday, October fifth, intended to. They're going to be uh information about solar for the home, heat pump technology, energy saving methods, lots of EV vehicles. For a lot of the local dealers. Um, so the information about sustainable landscaping, smart water use and much more.
Excellent.
Save energy, save money, save the planet.
That's something we can get into the Clipper too.
Yeah, that is.
Other side that is it? Are we already trying to?
Well, I, I think that this has been.
Has it already?
I'm, I wonder, um.
I haven't seen the last three weeks of baby. We got a stack of mail this big today.
You travel for pleasure or what?
A pleasure mostly, dropping off one kid at her school and then fun, more fun, and then visiting the other one for. Um, parent weekend already, already happened. I just barely dropped the second one off and we're going to parent again with the first one. Yeah, we did five states, three weeks. It's fun. Bar is very high right now. Very, very hot right now. Still summer there. Nineties and here. I was right there on the, I was in Palm Beach, a mile from the golf course when.
Oh.
Police car started going off. I swear, we, we, we heard it. My wife and I, we're talking about it. It's like, it sounds like firecrackers. I think it was the gunfire or anything. They fired at the guy.
Yeah.
Apparently, so. And then when we cross back over to get back to where our, our place is. There are always, there are a lot of police there now anyway, and secret service. Oh, there was a lot more. And we're in this giant suburban SUV and it's all blacked out windows on the thing. So we're, we're driving up, we're just, we didn't even know it, but they hacked. We're just driving up over the bridge. I saw a lot going on here right now. Why? And they're all looking at us. Like, are you pulling in here? I'm like, no, no, I'm not going in there. Getting arrested right now. I'm just, I got two chairs back here. We're bringing back to the condo. But it was, it was crazy. There were four or five boats with machine guns on the front. They were there the whole time. Anyway, that, that, we didn't even know what had happened. What's going on? I figured, oh, he must be getting ready to move. So they've got all the subway presence. No, no, they were rushing him back there. Great. It's strange. Very strange. Anyway.
Uh, we've sidewalk, like sidewalk committee haven't had a meeting since our last.
Okay, but you're going forward with trying to get that.
Yeah, that's gotta be by October first and so we'll see.
That'll be very, uh.
Pretty familiar, right?
Yeah.
So we'll be able to.
Sell the fifty feet of sidewalk.
That's the sad part.
Yeah.
That's the sad part.
Well, I have one more committee update of an affordable housing trial.
Affordable housing.
There in the final stretch, the housing production plan organization in there, um, Dan's doing a really great job of trying to. Really line it up with the comprehensive plan and get, get them closer together.
Uh, still not really there.
We're gonna try to build a couple of units.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're still working on the east street. Okay, um, but one of the things with east street going to eight rental units.
Eight, okay.
This is an RP and then they didn't get any responses.
Wow, again?
Yeah, that was the first one. They were still working on turning it.
Okay.
Okay. I know at one point they were looking for much more, much denser, but they couldn't get anybody to buy it. So they reduced it down to eight. And somebody to buy. Nobody did it that way either. The thing I want to mention about the housing production plan is that like the comprehensive plan. Obviously, the first thing you have to do is implement.
Yeah.
Implementation committee. So I've imploding this idea that uh the town should, you know, form an implementation committee and also. Uh, allocate some funding for a contract to support them because we don't tell.
Or it's, yeah, it doesn't work unless somebody's pushing.
So you're socializing that idea. Yeah, cause otherwise it's another one of those plans.
And it might be, might be one of those things we can get funding from some, from the state.
Okay. Right, so that was excellent. Anybody, anything else?
No, the next meeting, her, that I can see is uh October.
Okay, okay. Excellent. Enjoying those? I went to a bunch of them early on.
It's a lot going on and a lot of it's not too relevant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's, that's some, it's good to get the information, get that matter.
Yeah, so, yeah, a lot of it is too. So what Duxbury thing? Wouldn't do that. Yeah, yeah, good, good.
Okay.
The MAP.
But they're good. They, they provide us with a lot of, um. Good work when we get funding to do projects. They're very. But they did a great job with confidence. That went very well.